What did you do now?
So you hit the book.
Sweet, thank you.
You're down here.
No, I don't want to go through this one, don't I?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. I didn't see it, way out there.
We'll call a regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen at four thirty P. M. The order, first item on the agenda is your consent agenda items, what's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, approve the consent agenda items, any more discussion on any? See none, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no, motion carries. Item number two, the public hearing on the final plat of the Puco addition.
Dave Schnobrick, Community Development Director. I would first like to begin by noting that we've changed the format on the RCA forms, that's the Request for Council Action Form for Planning Commission Items. And you'll note that it's shorter, and the reason that it's shorter is because we have attached the entire Planning Commission staff report. And in the past, when we prepared the RCA form for the council, we were taking a lot of information from that Planning Commission report and simply transferring it over to that form. And so we thought it would just be easier if we gave you the Planning Commission report. In addition, the, taking the Planning Commission report works better with the agenda software that we currently use for city council meetings. So I guess that's the, we'd like to proceed in that direction. And then what we would do is we will add to any Planning Commission reports relevant information that comes up at the Planning Commission meeting, you know, important discussion, that type of thing. So it should work out, I think, fairly well, but it helps us out from a staff standpoint. Okay, regarding this particular request, the applicant is John Pullman, the owner of the property is Heiko, which is a partnership. The street address is two twenty-seven, First South Street. The property is generally located south of First South Street, and then west of the bike trail, and also west of Pullman Lumber Company. The plat would result in the creation of one lot, zero point eight-five acres, and that lot would be sold by Heiko to Pullman Lumber Company. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the final plat with one condition at its September twenty-sixth meeting, and I might note that that one condition has been completed, and so at the present time, there are no outstanding conditions.
Thank you, Dave. Public hearing, anybody like to be heard? If nobody wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, offer a resolution, waive the reading, approving the final plat of Polco addition located at two-two-seven First Street, First South Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing, offer the resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item number two-point-two, public hearing on the final assessment rolls for the two thousand eighteen street alley, utility street and alley improvements, Group One project. Mr. Kaler.
Thank you, Mr. President. This project was constructed last summer, basically. We still have some maintenance and warranty period on some, most of this work. Assessment notices have been mailed to the adjoining property owners that benefited from these improvements. I think you've got about twelve locations. I am aware of one written correspondence, and that's with regard to the Cottonwood Street, number one. Number one and number two kind of go together, otherwise I would suggest or recommend that you call them separately.
Okay.
So you could open up the hearing.
It's a public hearing, anybody like to be heard? We'll start with number one and number two.
Probably should read them.
Okay. First, number one is Cottonwood Street from Butternut Street to two-hundred-and-fifty feet south of Ridgeview Drive. And the second one is, number two is Ridgeview Drive from Cottonwood Street to West Intermiss. You got something else, Steve?
Mr. President, Nicole, did you have that? Do you want to read that into the record?
This letter is in regard to the MSAS one-oh-two project that was done in front of my home at ten-nineteen Cottonwood Street. We received a proposed assessment for our concrete driveway of four thousand four-hundred-and-fifty dollars and sixty cents. Please consider this our written objection to the Finance Director regarding the proposed assessment. After the March twentieth, two thousand eighteen city council meeting, I understood the homeowners would be responsible for the actual cost of our driveways between the sidewalk and the back of the curb. After receiving the amount we are assessed, I asked for clarification from the city and was told homeowners are being charged for the sidewalk that falls on the driveway also. I disagree with this due to the statement made at the March twentieth, two thousand eighteen city council meeting, that the only additional cost would be the piece between the back of the curb and the sidewalk. My understanding was the street assessment of eight thousand two-hundred-and-fifty dollars included the sidewalk, as well as the rest of the construction. Thank you for looking into this matter. Sincerely, Marv Hose.
In response to that?
Mr. President and council members, during the public hearing, I did make an error, and I said from the back of curb to sidewalk with regard to Mr. Com when he came up, but just after that, I gave him an estimate of two thousand dollars, which corresponds to the area to the back of sidewalk. Directly after that, the individual that wrote the letter of objection came up and asked for an estimate of a special assessment, and I indicated that my recommendation would be eighty-two fifty for the roadway improvements, plus the cost of the driveway concrete. Sidewalk is four inches thick, driveway concrete is seven inches thick, it was clearly poured through the back of side, back of the sidewalk area. So we consistently made those measurements and applied benefit based on that with regard to Cottonwood Street and Ridgeview Drive.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard on this one?
Name and address, just for the record.
Marv Hose, ten-nineteen Cottonwood Street. I appreciate the clarification, and I also wanted to thank Counselor Mack for clarifying it for me. I just was a little confused about what was being processed or whatever, and I just wanted to thank you for looking into it for me.
Okay, thank you very much.
For coming.
The reason I just did that response is because I thought I was doing the proper protocol the way it explained in the letter, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marv.
Any more comments?
You know, just a few comments for, when I was out there yesterday, I took a look at the sidewalk, you know, there are a few little warranty work that needs to be addressed out there.
We're aware of that.
Marv said he talked with Joe Statheim.
Track panel by Mr. Hose's, yes.
So, what's our standard procedure with that, then, to?
We have, Mr. President, we have a punch list that we give to the contractor, we update it about every six months, he still has another year, they still have another year on warranty, it's my expectation that they'll grab that this fall, or waiting for the subcontract, I believe that's on Fifth North Street, to come into town next week, and they'll grab that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard on that? See none, we'll go, number three, Jefferson Street from Fifth to Seventh North Street.
Mr. President, I have some information, but I first, I'd like to see if there's anybody from the public who maybe wants to talk first.
Anybody? See it done, go for it.
I've got one.
There's one.
Sorry. Oh. Okay. Bradley Dolmeyer, I live at six-twenty-five North Jefferson Street, and they did sewer and water, and curb and gutter, and they repaired part of my sidewalk, and now there's water pooling up on the sidewalk.
Oh.
It doesn't drain away, it just sits there, and then now it's going to freeze in the wintertime, and it's going to freeze, and people walk by my house, and what happens if someone falls down, breaks a hip or something? I have an eighty-two-year-old mother, she can't walk very good, and it's right in front of the house.
So is it a dip, you think, is it a?
It dips.
Okay.
I have to walk around it, it's a puddle.
Okay.
And my boulevard is all uneven when they did that. So I don't know, I'd like to get my sidewalk fixed first.
Mr. Dolmeyer, this is the first that I've been made aware of, it will certainly come out and check it out, and again, the contractor's got another year warranty, we'd like to get the sidewalk to dip out of there before winter, obviously.
Well, it'd be nice.
Yeah, well, this is the first I've heard about it, so.
Okay. Well, I just thought I'd come down here and tell you.
Yep, and we do have warranty until the end of next year on the sod as well.
Okay.
It's been there for a year, and actually, I noticed there are some, few depths in some edges of the sidewalk.
It's not even at all.
And we've had the, we've indicated, or told the contractor, there's warranty work, and they expect to come out yet this fall and work on that.
Okay. That's all I got to say.
Could you give me your address again, so we make sure and check?
Six-twenty-five North Jefferson Street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I got a letter from Mrs. Booball saying that we should speak up about this.
Certainly, we want to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I got one letter, and I'll read that into the record, and then I'll talk about the second one. Jesse Crowe, six-twenty-two North Jefferson, overall, he states, overall, the street project went well with some concerns, starting so late in the construction season, the boulevard was finished poorly with little to no fill applied prior to sodding, which created deep depressions along the curb and sidewalk. Contacted Matt, the project manager, to inspect the boulevard. Instead of action, I received comments about settling, which can't occur if there is no fill to settle, and also that the Fifth Street is worse. Simple request is please fix the depressions in the boulevard to avoid physical injury and possible damage to my lawnmower. Who is liable if any injury occurs to the boulevard? Mr. Crowe stated that he basically ended up fixing it himself because he couldn't mow in that area because there was such a tilt. So I told him right up what he spent on this, and he has black dirt at five dollars, grass seed at five dollars, labor, three hours of seventy-five, for a total of eighty-five dollars. An option potentially could be for this individual to reduce that off of his assessment, but I also got several phone calls from Bob Boobles, is that right? And they're at six-ten North Jefferson?
Six-fourteen.
Six-fourteen North Jefferson. Some concerns about the same thing about dirt, or not, or the fill not being completed up by the sidewalks on both sides, and concerns about a sidewalk square that should have been replaced and wasn't. So that, that was his concerns, again, with just unevenness. I walked there, I went down there, and I actually walked both blocks, and I, I saw some issues I saw, thought were even more concerning to me on the fifth, five-hundred block of North Jefferson, where there's one where you drive by and you're like, wow, you could just see that it's a low impression, then it goes up again, and, and some of the neighbors in that area said that they didn't prep very well, they basically laid the sod and left, and without any much prep work, and, and that's, now we're having problems. And I know we have warranties, so we can get some of the stuff taken care of, but I wanted to read that into the record, and I don't know what other councils feel about that reduced amount on that assessment on that particular one, but.
Mr. President, that, that area was sodded last October, at the end of, I think, the thirty-first of October, I've got with my notes, and I got a call from the individual who wrote this letter like two weeks ago. So this is the first we've heard about it, and I had my inspector go out the same day and discuss with the individual what he had for issues, and we told him we were going to have the contractor come back yet this fall and repair it, and we checked some with some other people that we could find. So we have a punch list, and we'll deal with the issues. I mean, we want to make people satisfied. Sod is always a little difficult at the end of the season. Typically, the contractor does the leveling and the fill, and the subcontractor with the sodding guy just comes and lays out the sod. So I don't know what happened, but my, both of my inspectors who are out in the projects indicated that we've had really good luck with this particular subcontractor, so we'll get it right. I just, like I said, I just heard about these things a couple weeks ago.
Mr. President, I, with respect to Counselor Schultz's question about an adjustment to the assessment, my recommendation would be that the assessment remain in place, and if there would be a claim that the property owner would have, that could be presented to the city for consideration, rather than adjusting assessments. I'm not saying it wouldn't be paid, but I think that would be the proper.
Okay, we can do it, sure. Okay, thank you.
Anything else left, or that it?
That's the two that I have.
I guess in reference to the comments to Steve, you know, I think, we hear this often, this ain't the first year. I'll be honest, when it went by my street, I thought it was horseshit.
This is the first thing I thought about it, but if you go out and look at this, Mr. President, it's all green and lush. The year that we did yours, it was terribly brown, and it just did not grow. So we can fix edges and things, but it's hard to make it grow in the hot summer, but I know, it's, I don't know what you do. I mean, roadway reconstruction, we can get the pipe at the right grade, get the proper backfill, but when it comes to trees and grass, it's kind of nature happening.
But I don't hear a lot of complaints about the grass, I hear complaints that the fill wasn't done, and you have your sidewalk, and they just plop the sod down, but they didn't fill in, and.
Like I said, we will get it right, and we will watch it.
And it's not your, I mean, not your air, I mean, it's the sodding company, obviously, that.
We're out there to inspect the project, and if, you know, I don't know what happened, we'll figure it out.
So people just need to let us, let the city know, when they're not, after the project's done, if there's issues, and that's, we wouldn't be here today with some of these, right? So maybe that's the message that we need, to get the word out more, to report any concerns on projects, so that we can make sure everything is done and done right.
Anybody else like to be heard? See none, we'll go on to the next one, number four, Allison Avenue, Ryan Road, and Airport Road, Maplewood Drive and Alley adjacent to the Sarah Hills Third Edition. Anybody like to be heard on that one? See none, number five, Oakwood Avenue from North Highland Avenue to Hazelwood Avenue. Number six, Alley Block one-eighty-five, north of Center Street. Number seven, Alley Block one-fifty-two, north of Center Street. Number eight, Alley Block ten, south of Center Street. Number nine, Alley Block one-forty-three, south of Center Street. Number ten, Twentieth North Street from Spring Street Alley to Block two-oh-two North and Front Street, from Twentieth North Street to Nineteenth North Street. Number eleven, Birchwood Drive, Turner Road and Maple Drive, Fair Hills Fifth Edition. Number twelve, miscellaneous sidewalk repairs. Nobody want to be heard on any of them? See none, entertain a motion, close the hearing.
I'll offer resolution, waive the reading, closing the public hearing and adopting the final assessment rolls for the two thousand eighteen utility street and alley improvements, Group One project payable over a ten-year period, along with a four-point-four percent simple interest charge on unpaid balances.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer the resolution, close public hearing, and the final assessment rolls. Any more discussion? See none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item number three, Rat Skeller Incorporated Tobacco License.
I'll offer motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
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 Falls, no, motion carries. Item three-point-two, bingo and raffle gambling permit for Cathedral of Holy Trinity, and that's for November fifteenth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll offer the motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
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 Falls, no, motion carries. Item number three-point-three, gambling permit for the New Ulm Area Catholic Schools, and that's for Friday, January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
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 Falls, no, motion carries. Item number four-point-one, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen weed snow removal assessments. Got it in front of you, got the list? Any discussion on it? Motion to approve and establish a special assessments for two thousand eighteen, nineteen weed and snow removal, and set a date for a public hearing on Tuesday, November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, at four-thirty P. M.
I'll second.
We have motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
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 Falls, no, motion carries. Item four-point-two, designate the two thousand twenty election polling places. Let's see, Nicole, you got anything on that?
Counselors, this is, because of the March election next year, we have to declare earlier, we have till the first of December, but we decided just to do it as long as we know where we're going. We have replaced, since we won't be able to use the rec center with all the construction, we have replaced the Harmon Park Shelter with Saint John's Lutheran Church for, for this election. We'll likely go back to the rec center in the following election, so, for the following future elections.
Thank you. Any concerns, questions, comments?
Harry Nunn, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We have motion, second, offer resolution, waive the reading, any more discussion? See none, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmidt.
Yes, motion carries. Item four-point-three, request for proposals for Palmer Avenue. Mr. Kaler, Brent?
Yes, Mr. President, we're requesting authorization to go out for some engineering services proposals to, basically, our commitment to the National Guard site, National Guard Armory site, is to modify the roundabout on Highway fourteen by Menards, create an access to the south, about a hundred and fifty feet, and extend utilities to serve that site as well. The, the requirements to work on a roundabout and within the mid-dive right away, take some certifications and things we don't have, we like to go out and get proposals. We'll come back with any numbers before we hire for anything you spent.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
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 Falls, no, motion carries. Item four-point-four, request proposal for Twentieth North Street.
Mr. President, it's similar situation, we've got some federal money, a couple years, two or three years down the road, that requires delivery of a federal project, and it's kind of a lengthy, long process, and we'd like to go out for engineering proposals as well. And I might add, all these projects will be bid publicly, so it's just part of the process. And again, we'll bring them back to the city council.
I'll offer the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See none, on favor say aye.
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 Falls, no, motion carries. Item number four-point-five, amend chapter eight of public protection of the city code.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I asked that the council take a look at this. The council established the Blight Committee some time ago, and we've had a number of meetings, the most recent was on September twenty-third of this year. We've had discussions and updates about concerns or issues relating to Blight in New Ulm. I do think that there's been some substantial progress that's been made in the last year, primarily due to the officers of the New Ulm Police Department. Chief Borkert has established specific programs in each of the wards, assigned officers, and I think that particularly in the residential areas, they've been doing a pretty good job of making sure that our code is followed. One of the things that the committee had recommended, and I think they were concerned about, is trying to deal with the situation where there are repeat offenders, and this would be a property owner or renter, where there are particularly deposits of garbage or things like that, abandoned vehicles, other junk that might be on the yard, it's called to their attention by the inspector or the police department, it's removed, and then the next week, sometimes the next day, more stuff appears. And what the proposal is, the committee had thought that if there was an escalated scale of penalties, so that if a person had one violation, there would be a minimum fine of a hundred dollars, a second violation in a rolling twelve-month period would be increased, and then a third, it would be increased again. There's nothing particularly magical about the amounts of the fines, this is something that, we wanted to get something concrete in front of the council for you to consider. This may not be a direction that you want to go, you might want to do something different, but this at least would be one means of trying to address these repeat offenders. So if you wanted to move forward with it, the next item on the agenda would be the first consideration of the ordinance that would implement this as a specific series of penalties, but if you want to send it back to the committee, if you don't like the direction this is going, or you're not interested in it, then there would be no need to consider the next agenda item.
Any concerns, questions, comments?
I'd like to just add, you know, from, the Blight Committee's met a few times in this past year, and it's, we've discussed this a couple times, and how do we go about it, you know, to address the repeat offenders, and this is something that the committee thought that should come to the council and see if the council liked to move forward with this, or go back to the drawing board again, and come up with another option to bring back to the council.
I also sit on that committee, and this was a long project of mine when I was a building official. In my mind, you know, you had the one-time hit somebody would pay, could be three times a year, the unlicensed car, the garbage, the same fee, in my mind, you owe it to the rest of the neighborhood. In my mind, you owe it to the rest of the neighborhood, make it hurt so this person just doesn't pay the fine and just continue doing business. I think it's a good idea. It's a step in the right direction. If you're not in violation, you're not going to get a fine.
I support this as well. I think that, I've sat on this council for 11 years now, and we see the same names year after year after year, and the same people in violation. Not always the same people, but if you're one of those unlucky people that lives next to a blighted property, it's so frustrating and hard to deal with and look at, and so I'm certainly going to support this request.
I'd like to just add a little bit that right now, law enforcement has been, staff has just been dealing with residential at this point in time. They haven't been dealing with industrial or at this time.
So does this get added to our fee schedule, or how does that get added, or is this a separate?
It's a good question, counselor. I think basically what this does is there are parts of our code where violations are criminal offenses. And this is something where if a property owner or renter was going to be charged with violating these parts of the code, they'd receive a citation. And one of the things that our office has found as prosecutors is these days there are payable schedules at the courthouse and fine schedules, and this is all in their computer system for state statutes. When it comes to city codes, sometimes they're in a quandary. They don't know what to do because it's not built in. If they had this information, at least the court system would know these are the minimum fines that should be imposed. There can be more serious offenses. If it's something that's really bad, it could be a misdemeanor with a fine of up to $1,000 or even jail time, but this at least would establish some minimum fines.
But these fines are not written into the code, right?
Yes, this would be, this would be, the next item would be an ordinance that would require these as minimum fines. Again, the nuisance is a misdemeanor, so that's got a higher maximum level. But this would just be to give the court system an indication that it will cost the property owners these amounts at a minimum if there are a first violation, a second, or a third.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to authorize a city attorney to prepare a draft ordinance to amend Chapter 8 of the New Ulm City Code to include a new Section 8.47 to provide for enhanced penalties for multiple violations of Sections 8.45 and 8.46 of the code regarding allowing or permitting public nuisances.
I'll second.
We have motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none. On favor, say aye.
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 Close, no. Motion carries. Item number 4.6, First Consideration of Ordinance Number 19-033. Roger.
Thank you. Mr. President, if you'd like, I can read this into the record. The charter says a first consideration, but traditionally, at least the first time it's come up, we've read it. If you'd like me to proceed with that, I can do it.
Go for it.
Sure.
It's not real loud.
Ordinance Number 19-033, 5th Series, City of New Ulm, Brown County, Minnesota. An ordinance amending Chapter 8 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm relative to penalties for committing or permitting a public nuisance. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of New Ulm, Section 1, the Chapter 8 of the City Code of the City of New Ulm, Minnesota is hereby amended by adding the following new section to read as follows. Section 8.47, Penalty: It shall be a misdemeanor offense for any person to violate the provisions of Section 8.45 and 8.46 described above. A conviction of such violation shall result in a minimum sentence under the following schedule. For the first offense within a 12-month period, a fine of $100. For a second offense within a 12-month period, a fine of $300. For a third or greater offense within a 12-month period, a fine of $500. For purposes of determining the minimum sentence, the date of the offense, not the date of the conviction, shall be the operative date. Section 2, that the ordinance shall take effect and shall be enforced 30 days from and after its adoption, approval, and publication.
Thank you. We'll go on to item 4.7, Fire Department Donations.
Mr. President, I'll offer resolution, waive the reading, to accept the following donations to the fire department. $38.80 from Cyber Grants, which is a 3M donation dispersment, $500 from the Sleepy Eye Sportsman Club, and $100 from Ann Vogel. Thank you to all three, and the mayor will send out some thank you letters.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See none. Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. With no more business, meeting adjourned.